Good evening, Central Unified School District. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees this October twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty three. We start at six oh two P M. Let the attendance show that everyone is in attendance this evening. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion by trustee Corio, a second by trustee Cervantes. Those in favor please say aye.
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 Those opposed, those abstaining, motion carries seven zero. First we open to any comments from the public on any closed session items.
Setting thirty seconds on the clock.
Thank you. And for those of you that may be viewing and potentially joining later for open session, we just want to remind the community that may be viewing that we are at the district office. So if you are at the pack, you still have time to run over and join us here at the district office.
Thirty seconds have passed and we have no comments by phone at this time.
Thank you. Then we are going to go ahead and move to closed session and we will be reconvening an open session back at seven P M. Thank you.
Mic check one two three, three two one. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Talk for me again, Bradley. There you are, okay we can hear you.
Ready, salute.
Thank you, Vice President Corio. Could I ask Senator Lazo to come and join us in the front and share our community engagement information?
Good evening. If you wish to address the board, call 559-276-3150 or fill out a request form provided on the table near the entrance and submit it to the clerk of the board prior to the meeting. If you wish to speak on an item on the agenda, please do so when that item is called. If you wish to speak on an item not on the agenda, you may speak during the public comment section of the agenda. Si desea dirigirse a la mesa directiva, llame al número 559-276-3150 o complete un formulario de solicitud provisto en la mesa cerca de la entrada y preséntelo al secretario de la mesa directiva antes de la reunión. Se permitirán comentarios públicos relacionados con los temas de la agenda cuando se llame el tema. Los comentarios públicos sobre un tema que no está en la agenda se permitirán durante la sección comentarios públicos de la agenda. The district welcomes other language speakers to the board meetings. Anyone planning to attend and needing an interpreter for a language other than Spanish should call 559-274-4700, extension 10150 by noon on the Friday preceding the board meeting or at least forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting so arrangements can be made for an interpreter. El distrito da la bienvenida a las personas que hablan otros idiomas a las reuniones de la mesa directiva. Cualquier persona que planifique asistir y necesite un intérprete para un idioma que no sea español, llame al 559-274-4700, extension 10150, el viernes antes de la reunión y antes del mediodía o por lo menos cuarenta y ocho horas antes de la reunión para poder hacer los arreglos para la interpretación. Thank you.
Gracias. Next we turn to our presentations with our special student recognition by Assistant Superintendent Boatwright.
Thank you so much. So Central East High School has received national banner recognition for Special Olympics for being an exemplary unified champion school. The national recognition is awarded to schools that demonstrate an inclusive campus climate and exude a sense of collaboration, engagement, and respect for all members of the student body and staff. An inclusive school climate that fosters understanding and respect for all can influence how students think and act, not only within school hours but beyond the campus as well. These positive actions can ignite change in neighborhoods and communities. We congratulate Central East High School on this much deserved national recognition. Here tonight is Principal Brad Edmonds, adapted physical education specialist Theresa Boyer, and they have a few others that I'd like to invite them up to the mic to introduce.
Good evening. Here tonight with us is Pam Dietz. Can you guys stand when I call your name? Isabel Ortega, Felicia Long, and we've got some former students, Adon, current and former students in the program. Isabella, Thaddeus, Brianna, Julian, Joseph, Andrew, Anthony, Jordan, and our Special Olympics Senior Manager of the Central Valley, Drew Tirojan, is also here. Thank you, guys.
Can we have the board acknowledge you and have you all come up as well? Can we get one more round of applause? Thank you so much. Continuing on some recognition, we have assistant Continuing on some recognition, we have Assistant Superintendent Collegian going to share with us some employee recognition.
Yes, thank you, trustee Singh. This evening, we have the pleasure of introducing to the Board of Trustees and everybody present here tonight our newly appointed administrators. This evening, we have with us the new Director of Fiscal Services, Mrs. Maricela Ordóñez. Please give her a round of applause. Please stand to be recognized. Ms. Ordóñez served as the Finance Director prior to, of course, being here with us at Southworth Transportation Agency, where she managed the fiscal administrative aspects of a growing bus agency, among other things, seeking securing funding for an ever-growing bus fleet. So, congratulations on your assignment. We're excited to have you. And please make your way to the School Board to be formally recognized. The new principal at Madison Elementary School, Ms. Jackie Oliver, is yet to arrive. I think she got caught up in traffic, but says she's on her way in. So perhaps maybe later on, we can formally recognize her. But I also want to congratulate her on her administrative appointment as principal of Madison Elementary School. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we turn to our alumni recognition, and I'll turn the floor to Gilbert Magallo.
Yes, this week's honoree is Central East High School class of 2005 Samuel Molina. I'm going to call him up shortly, but first, I want to let you guys know what the person who nominated him said. They said Samuel is a dedicated member of the community. During his tenure in nonprofit, Samuel Molina has led efforts to advance the voices of others. He increased the number of registered voters, mainly youth in the Central Valley, by more than 50,000, including students from Central East High School. He co-sponsored many state legislative bills that expanded voter access, such as Prop 17 and ACA VI. At the local level, he led efforts to establish the first Dream Center in a K through 12 system at Fresno Unified and created the Immigrant Affairs Committee for the City of Fresno. He served in the U.S. Marine Corps from 2008 to 2013 and was recognized with the National Defense and Global War on Terrorism Service medals. He's also the former Deputy Director to Binational of Central California, where he founded the Financial Empowerment Program, which reduces health disparities in low-to-moderate income households through free education on financial concepts and wealth-building strategies. Currently, he's the founder and CEO of the Academy of Financial Education. Mr. Molina, we thank you for your service and commitment to the community. Let's give him a round of applause. Please come up and share a few words with us.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. I want to say thanks to the person who nominated me, and of course, to you all for this award. It does really mean a lot. It's been several years since I've been back on this campus. I went to Teague Elementary some, you know, 25, 30-plus years ago and got into my share in trouble. Just ask my mom. She remembers the time she had to keep me from getting expelled. But, you know, as Gilbert mentioned, you know, I think Central Unified School District for all of their hard work to the staff, to the administrators, both past and present. You know, I thank you all for your dedication to the community. It really does mean a lot. And I say to the youth who are in the crowd, you know, if I can do it, you can do it as well, right? It takes a lot to get through high school, especially these days. And it takes a lot to, you know, really survive on your own as an adult and to give back to the community. But it's an obligation that we all share. And so I hope that for those of you moving forward, that you'll continue to give back to the community as well. Thank you.
Just as a quick word, it's not often I would do this, but I've had the opportunity to work with Samuel in a professional capacity as too. He is just one of those people that, in any given way, finds ways to give back to the community, whether it be working with youth in terms of his real commitment to making sure all can participate in this democracy or even in his new role in the Central Valley, really making sure that folks have the financial literacy tools to really participate in a just economy. Really want to appreciate, from your military service to everything that you do. We're honored to be able to honor you. Thank you, Samuel. Next, we turn to Serena Dohee, our Executive Director, for a report about our Foundation for Central Schools.
Thank you, Board President. Good evening, Board of Trustees. And thank you for having me. I am proud to represent the Foundation for Central Schools and as their Executive Director. And for those of you who don't know me, my name is Serena Dohee. This update is full of lots of vital information, including an update on our community food pantry that has been officially opened since August 25th. Just this past week, we served 237 people in just one hour. This project has been a vital resource to our student services team and our school liaisons, allowing them to quickly create bags of groceries and personal care items. Most importantly, we have been able to provide private shopping appointments to accommodate Central Unified employees during their busy work schedule. My biggest feedback from the community and my peers has been about the inside of the pantry. This past distribution, I watched three little girls admire the mural as they saw their own personal reflection on the walls. It was the gold earrings of the little girl's face that really brought it in full circle for them as they each admired their own gold earrings. I truly believe that this food pantry has been the starting point for many conversations about resources and is giving many folks instant relief of support from the Foundation and from Central Unified. I would also like to give a huge thank you to our Adult Transition Program volunteers and the Interact Club from Central High School. These volunteers have been a key resource for helping us keep the pantry stocked and ready for our families, including tonight, which is why my hair is a mess. I would also like to thank everyone for joining us at the annual State of the District, September 20th, for those that you attended. It was an amazing event celebrating the achievements of our students, from great music to great food and, of course, awards. We gave away a total of $25,000 in grants, from classroom project grants to school club grants, and of course, our Well-being Grant recipients. And of course, another huge congratulations to our 2023 Champion Honories. I also wanted to acknowledge and thank all of our monthly employee donors. We are so close to our 500 employee donor goal. We're about 20 or so away from that goal. However, we still gave away our Disneyland trip. So, congratulations to Allison Medina from Glacier Point. Her class was very excited for her. And just this past week, we kicked off the 19th Annual Warm for Winter Event at Roosevelt Elementary, where every student from Roosevelt received a school spirit sweater. Additionally, this year, 200 students were selected for a $100 school shopping spree at Burlington, thanks to the Assistance League of Fresno. And 2,500 students across Central Unified will receive a sweater or jacket. Thank you again to our partners, Assistance League of Fresno, Granville Homes, and the Kaiser Benefits Program Grant. I would also like to acknowledge a new partner that we are working with this year, Ms. Lorraine Estrada of Randy's Closet, a nonprofit organization and ministry of Cornerstone Church. Ms. Lorraine and her team have been able to provide gently-loved and new clothing for our families in addition to what we're already doing in the clothing closets and Burlington. This has been a really key resource, again, for our liaisons and student services, another resource from the community to help provide for our families immediately. So again, I'd just like to recognize Randy's Closet and thank Ms. Estrada for her time and dedication to Central Unified this year. Our next event is the First Annual STEM Posiум, which is happening on November 13th. Thanks to a new partnership with the PG&E and the PG&E Latino Resource Group, it will be a day filled of STEM-focused workshops and will be available for high school students across Central Unified. If anyone is interested in partnering with us for this event, feel free to reach out to me directly. And lastly, we will end the year with the Annual Holiday Joy Food Drive. So, start collecting your cans and non-perishables. The food drive collection starts November 27th. It's just around the corner and will go until December 8th. And the big food distribution will be on December 16th. More information will be released in the coming weeks, and we look forward to having our trustees out there again. I know trustee Correa will be helping us. And of course, kid-friendly items are always welcomed in donation as well. All this information that I shared today is available on our website, centralfoundation.org. And you can also join us at our next Board meeting, which will happen on November 15th. And I look forward to seeing everybody at the Holiday Joy Food Distribution. Again, that is December 16th. Thank you, and please let me know if you have any questions.
Do we have any comments, trustee Correa?
I have just more comments than questions. I just want to applaud you and thank you for all the work that you've done. I want to remind my fellow colleagues that your position was one that this board took action a couple of years ago to fund. And in addition to all the great work that we're doing, that position and that decision was money well-spent because every time that you're providing any quarterly reports to us, you keep growing the program. And so I really appreciate you really involving our community and providing so much back to our students and our families and our teachers as well and our staff. So, thank you very much for your hard work. I've been fortunate enough to be able to participate and help with some of the events, and I see the joy and the contributions and the significant difference that we're making in our community. So, thank you very much for all that you're doing for us. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, I invite up, we have for Employee Association highlights. Do we have? Oh, yes. And actually, before we go on, can we invite our, I'll turn it back over to Assistant Superintendent.
Yes, thank you. We do have our new principal of Madison Elementary School in the room now. Please give a warm welcome to Jackie Oliver, the new principal at our elementary school at Madison. Jackie, Ms. Oliver has been with Central for 23 years. Started as a library technician, then kindergarten teacher. Her most recent role was the vice principal at Madison Elementary School and now is the passionate principal of that school. She is excited about building relationships within the community there and bringing student success to another level. One more warm welcome for Jackie. Thank you.
So it doesn't appear we have any reports tonight from our employee associations, but we wish them well and look forward to hearing from them in the future. Then we next turn to our school highlights, and we invite up Principal Fink to share with us what's going on at Rio Vista Middle School.
Good evening, President Singh, members of the Board, and Superintendent Davis. I am really excited to be here and serving the school in the community that I reside in. It's really awesome and interesting, and it's exciting to go to the grocery store now. It's a lot different than it was before. I don't know what I did. Okay, we'll just go with that. Sorry. All right, we have some celebrations coming our way. We have some data from last year. And things to highlight are we have reclassified 14% of our EL students, which is huge. And we scored 81.4% on the ELPI Index, which is the highest progress rate of all the schools. So that's something to celebrate. We've grown. We've grown in math and English. We were the third highest in math on our S-PAC in the district. And this year, in English, we exceeded our blueprint goal for 24, 25 already, and we grew to 56.8%. Other celebrations that aren't on the list, we have doubled our band, up to almost 94 students in band in one year. It's incredible. We have two sports that made it to the championship game. We have seventh-grade volleyball, and we have tennis, who made it to the championship game. And I think they're nine and one this season, and they were second in the league. For challenges, we have some that we're highlighting. We have seen a little inconsistency in our PLC process, school-wide. And while our growth is nice to see, it's still not good enough for us. We want to meet the standards, obviously, at a better rate. 60.3% of our students not meeting standard in math is not good enough for us. And 43.2% of our students not meeting standard in ELA is not good enough for us. So we are working really hard to make sure that more students, all students, hopefully, can meet those standards. We are working on a challenge of connecting students to school and engaging them, as we've seen in attendance numbers in the past. And then our suspension rate last year did grow. And so we're looking at that as a challenge to try to overcome this year. And our panorama surveys decreased last year. So we are really working on building a positive climate, increasing student belonging, building those relationships back up, and our safety is our number-one priority this year. So with that being said, we have tons of highlights. We are rolling up our sleeves and doing a lot of work. We have reset our whole PLC process. We have gone back to the beginning and focused on the four questions. We have made it, we've looked at loose versus tight, and we've looked at our teams meeting every week. And they are working with the coach, Dr. Francois, who's doing amazing work with them. And they have bought into that process. They're looking at creating equitable practices. They're looking at aligning their curriculum. They're looking at prioritizing standards together, giving common assessments. Kind of alongside of that is the on-track work. They're looking at vertical alignment. They're looking at reteaching, providing those opportunities for students to reteach and retest so that they have more time with the standards, so that they can master them. We have done a lot of work so far trying to embed culturally responsive and affirming practices in our classrooms. And so we've done some PD on what that looks like. And we've done, we created some toolboxes for teachers. We've done a lot of walks where we celebrate those culturally affirming practices, school-wide. We are also rebranding our entire PBIS Positive Behavior Expectations. Hopefully, by mid-year, we'd like to transition our seventh and eighth graders into that this year. We have tried to align more with Garza, and so we have voted on the acronym RISE UP. So we're going to be teaching a little bit more about respect, integrity, self-motivation, and excellence. So that is something that we're looking forward to. This year, we have created SEL lessons through the Suite 360 that are going on every single social studies class. They're taught weekly. Our PBIS team and our admin team are creating, and our activities team, we're creating safety lessons, behavior lessons that are going out in our advisory period. We had orientation, back-to-school night, that were well-attended. I mean, we had so many students and parents in that gym for orientation. There weren't seats for everyone, as some of you can attest to. We have done PBIS walks, where we have taught the expectations through the different locations. We've kind of re-teached behavior. We've kind of re-teaught behavior in rallies in different ways to try to get the seventh and eighth graders on board for how we behave and keep a safe and positive climate on campus. We have so much support with our Thinkery staff, with our SenCal mentors, with our intervention specialists that's done a lot of work around attendance and trying to go out into the community and see why students don't come to school and, you know, try to problem-solve with parents to collaborate with them. We have a reading lab. We have an academic counselor this year who's hitting home the A through G high school requirements, and she's trying to give more information to kids at a younger age, teaching them about the importance of academics even in the middle school. And we have mass support as well. So we have, and we have an SRO on campus who has been amazing, an amazing support for our students. We did hold a parent engagement night in October, just last week, and that was after conferences. And we kind of educated our parents on everything from the importance of coming to school, even if it's an excused absence, and why that, you know, impacts learning. We talked about see something, say something. We gave them all of the information on the resources and interventions that we provide for all the different things, from social-emotional to academic support. They were amazed at the resources that we have. A lot of them didn't understand or know that we had them. So it's really a nice opportunity, and we're looking for more ways to include more parents. Maybe free food might help. But we're trying to include more parents so that we can just give that information to more people because you can send it on a parent square, but it's not the same as having that personal interaction with them. So we've worked really hard on building that community. It's been a pleasure to bond with my staff, to bond with my students, and my community members are so supportive. You see some highlights there of our teacher professional development, where we're looking at collaboration. We've had a lot of different fun, exciting activities for, like, in that picture, it's a teacher chair decorating contest, which was kind of fun. And then we have our back-to-school night and different activities that we've had for the students. So it's been amazingly fun, and thank you for hearing about Rio.
Questions or comments from the board? Trustee Coria?
First, welcome, and thank you for all the great work that you've shared. I know you haven't been at that campus for very long, so it's great to hear all the positive feedback and changes you've made. Can you, and fantastic to hear about the parent meeting that you had last week and sharing those resources and making them aware. Just a couple of questions based on the information you provided, and you may or may not have the answer at this point, so it's fine if you don't. Your suspension rate, that was increased. Can you, do you, can you identify any particular violations or type of behavior that's consistently occurring that's maybe the result of that increase?
We're looking at the suspension rates, and it looks as if the A1 violations, which is the fighting, is causing a lot of the increase. Last year, they did have a little bit more issue with vaping on campus. We have not seen that hardly at all this year in our numbers. It's mostly the safety violations. So we're working on really focusing on improving that.
And then you talked about providing culturally affirming practices. Can you talk a little bit more about and provide maybe some examples as to some of the things that the campus is doing? I know anecdotally, myself and some of the trustees have heard from some of the communities and some of their concerns, and parents and students, so I'm just kind of curious, now since you've been there, and I'm curious some of the changes and what that looks like.
Well, culturally affirming practices, they look at different cultures, and it's not just a student's cultural heritage or background. It's maybe a group that they're a part of. Maybe they associate with the hip-hop group, or maybe they associate with a Christian group, or maybe they associate with Hispanic heritage, you know, whatever it is. And it's looking for those ways to make students feel safe and included in the classroom. So having those discussions, including that, those enrichments, those supplemental materials that students can connect with, connecting to their background knowledge, things that they like, things that, you know, they can relate to, whether it be sports or anything, band, whatever it is. And so it's looking for those opportunities for students to feel a part of that community and feel like they matter. And they can feel like they can bring a part of themselves to that classroom, and it's a whole culture in the classroom itself that's created through, you know, including everyone and their backgrounds and what they bring to the table to the classroom. So anytime we see that, we point it out, and we try to share those practices and different things that people can do to bring people together.
Fantastic. Thank you so much.
Trustee Servantes.
Thank you again for that presentation, but mostly I just have comments. Congratulations on the success that you are having.
Thank you.
And thank you for acknowledging the resources that this administration and this board has supported to offer additional services to students, academic and both mental. But with that, I just want to admire your strength for calling out that sixty percent of kids are not making math and the forty-three that are not making ELA. That's something that's incredibly challenging, but it takes a lot of strength because that's the first words out of your mouth, which tells me I have conviction, because you have conviction, that you're going to make that change. And so I really appreciate that because that's sometimes very difficult to talk about, right? We want to hide away, we want to hide from the most challenging things, but the reality is that's the first thing you hit head-on, so I admire that.
Thank you.
And look forward to the change.
Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you.
I just want to appreciate you, Principal Fink, and probably in somewhat connection with trustee Servantes's comments. You know, really being able to have that sort of, like, radical vulnerability, sharing with us some of the challenges that even the panorama survey showed. I just wanted to just at least pose the question, are there other additional resources or things that you're sort of excited about, just to make sure that students, you know, we've seen that transition from the period of lockdowns to, you know, that sort of larger nationwide trend where students don't feel as connected. Are there additional things that we can make sure that at least at that site, and of course, we're thinking policy-wide, district-wide, just to make sure that students really do feel connected to their campus?
That's a good question. I know that, I know that we are working on our connections with people, you know? And so having that SRO part-time has been awesome, but even a consistency of having them full-time would be amazing, and their connections with the liaisons and all the support staff. Those things that you guys have put in place have really made a difference in the lives of our kids, so like, we greatly appreciate support like that. In terms of, I think it's just more a matter of getting people to understand what their roles are and what they do and how they can access those services. Because a lot of times, especially at the middle school level, our kids just react. They don't really think before they do, or like, let me go use the Thinkery. They don't really think about that. But I just, I appreciate all the extra-supported personnel that you've added, and that's been really helpful to us.
Thank you so much, and thanks for the great work y'all are doing there.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. May I ask Principal Robinson from CLASS to join us in the front?
Good evening, Board President Singh, Governing Board of Trustees, Superintendent Davis, and to those in attendance. Thank you for this opportunity to present and share with you some of what the dedicated, caring, and talented staff at Central Learning Adult, an alternative school site commonly known as CLASS, are doing and have accomplished. I'm Ed Robinson and have embarked on my third year at CLASS, and I'm tremendously blessed and fortunate to be able to serve as principal and have the platform to support our students, our staff, and our collective school community progress and make continuous improvement in a myriad of areas. CLASS is a unique school in the students who we serve and the two schools and one program that share our campus. We have a K-12 Independent Study School wherein all students are with us voluntarily. We have an adult school wherein we create and provide a variety of classes and programs designed to meet the educational, vocational, and career pathway interest and needs of our adult citizenry in our local community and region. We also have an adult transition program, commonly referred to as Connections, wherein we serve the needs of adult students with disabilities ages eighteen to twenty-two. Within our district-wide administrative cohort, we have been reading a book entitled Culturally Responsive Teaching and the Brain: Promoting Authentic Engagement and Rigor Among Culturally and Linguistically Diverse Students, which aligns with all the many elements and avenues our teachers and staff have taken and continue to take to authentically embed culturally affirming teaching practices to promote inclusion and equity amongst and for all of our students. In this book, it states that positive relationships exemplified as caring are one of the major pillars of culturally responsive teaching. This very pillar is one of the hallmarks of who our teachers and staff are and their natural intrinsic makeup as educators carried out and made visible on a daily basis. The very fundamental core of independent study whereby every student is able to meet individually with their teacher lends itself to our teachers having the ideal setting and educational environment to prepare, design, and support each individual student, intentionally cater to their specific learning needs as well as their social-emotional needs. In short, we have a fiercely dedicated and committed team of educators who get to meet each student where they're at and partner with them to move them forward to success. Our Independent Study School has and continues to appeal to a wide variety of students for a broad range of reasons, such as behind on amount of credits earned and not being in position to meet graduation requirements on time, challenges with attending school all day, five days each week, and a multitude of social-emotional characteristics, to name just a few. Having said that, we have some of the most intelligent, gifted, and capable students with good character and intrinsic values. With our students, we will not always see and base our students and staff's effectiveness and success upon standardized assessment scores and traditional objective data points. They simply do not tell the story, the full story, of our students and the significant progress and achievements they make at class. The core of the real success and outcomes of our students rest squarely upon the safe, inclusive, and supportive school and learning environment they find and learn to internalize, all while developing a greater interest in school and confidence in their growing ability to create and produce high-quality student work across all content and subject areas. All of this is fostered and cultivated by our teachers and staff. Now turning to our slides, and the first one with celebration. With our Independent Study School, we currently have two-hundred-and-forty-one students enrolled. We have improved our graduation rate each of the last two years, growing by five percent in the twenty-one-twenty-two school year and an additional three percent in the twenty-two-twenty-three school year. We have had zero student suspensions in the last two years, and our DNF rate is zero percent. All of our teachers give all of our students the opportunity to relearn, review, and reassess until they earn a grade of C or better. Indicated by the Spring 2023 Panorama Survey results, our students rated CLASS as highest for the secondary schools in three areas: school climate, school safety, and having a growth mindset. Our parents rated CLASS as highest for the secondary schools in two areas: family-school communication and school safety. And our teachers rated CLASS the highest for their teaching efficacy. As a result of the work of our vice principal and teachers, forty-three point eight percent of our English learner students progressed at least one English learner performance index level, providing a pathway to English language proficiency. Our academic counselor meets individually with every student and parent upon enrollment. He creates an academic plan and maps out their individual pacing and timeline to meet graduation requirements and/or transfer back to their comprehensive homeschool. With our adult school, we currently have approximately four-hundred-and-forty students enrolled. As of last year, we now provide every student with a comprehensive orientation, a way of meeting, welcoming, and developing a relationship with each of them while providing a view of the courses, programs, and services that we provide. Our outreach coordinator meets with individual students to help support them with their next steps, whether that consists of pursuing employment, following a new career path, enrolling for college, creating a resume, along with many other services. We have been addressing areas of need to pursue WASC accreditation for our adult high school diploma program, which will benefit our adult graduates. Due to the work of our data technician, teachers, and staff, we have realized significant improvement in our data integrity reports. Uncommon to most outside of adult school, those within the adult school, data integrity reports are state-based reports with comparable key data points among all of the adult schools within the State Center Adult Education Consortium, which consists of a total of twenty-two schools within our region. These data points include such data as student enrollment, retention rates, academic performance assessment growth, the quality of our quarterly state testing, and the gathering and entry of student information. Central Adult School has been acknowledged by our consortium, which is our regional governing body for Central Adult School, for our improved data. For our adult transition program, commonly called Connections, we currently have approximately thirty-eight students enrolled. As a result of student and parent interest from the quality of our teachers and staff within the program, we have grown from two classes to three classes this year. Due to the coordination and development of creating community partners by our teachers, our Connections students are exposed to and are participating in community-based instruction and valuable work experience on multiple days every week, which is a core element of adult transition programs. Examples include Chili's, El Bajillo, the Fresno Shafi Zoo, the Mint Thrift Store, Round Table Pizza, and the Student Dining Facility at Fresno State. Moving to our challenge, the ability to move all senior students to meet graduation requirements remains our most significant challenge. To provide some context, we currently have a hundred-and-ten seniors currently enrolled with us. Out of those hundred-and-ten, seventy are fourth-year seniors, and out of those hundred-and-ten, forty of which are fifth-year seniors. Thirty-four of those one-hundred-and-ten, roughly one-third, are in need of more than eighty credits to graduate upon entering the twenty-three-twenty-four school year. Some things that we are doing, we conduct individual meetings with students and parents the very day they enroll and right after their orientation. Our academic counselor meets with our seniors consistently throughout the school year. We provide them with opportunities to attend and receive support on multiple days each week above and beyond their mandatory scheduled day. And we also have provided opportunities for additional instructional support during evenings or possibly on Saturdays. Mitigating this challenge is some of the continual core work of our teachers and staff that we fully embrace. It is always in front of us. Turning to our spotlight, and for independent study, we now have an intervention counselor three days every week to provide social-emotional support for our students, which has made a significant impact. We have a full-time library-media technician to help support literacy for our students and a print-rich environment. We have a full-time special education aide who has helped elevate the learning and progress of our students. Our outreach consultant meets with every senior student and their parent during their enrollment orientation to help them navigate the college and career components awaiting for them after graduation. She then schedules monthly appointments with every senior. Last year, three of our teachers took students to the California 9/11 Memorial in Clovis, the Robert Ogata Studio to hear about his personal story and experience of he and his family living in a Japanese internment camp, and a visit to the Pinedale Remembrance Plaza. This proved to be a valuable learning experience for many of our students. Starting last school year, we invite the counselors from Fresno City College to come multiple times throughout the year on our campus to provide information to our seniors and help them register for Fresno City College. With our adult school, for two years now, we have hosted an Adult Education and Resource Fair, which we will host again this year on our campus. Over forty of our students attended the Fresno City College Open House in April. This was the largest student contingency for all adult schools within our region, and we provided bus transportation to. we provided bus transportation to help get them there. We were honored to be asked to host and provide a digital literacy program, which we began in August. It is a partnership between Fresno State University, Fresno City College, and the Fresno County Library. Due to widespread interest and initial success, we began a second cohort of classes earlier this month. We created and provide an ESL class now that is taught at Biola Elementary School. This originated from interest from the Biola parent community. With our adult transition program, our teachers and staff have developed and cultivated partnerships with a variety of local businesses and nonprofit entities to provide our students with valuable community-based instruction and work experience. Our students continue to compete in a myriad of special Olympic events throughout the area. Thank you again for allowing me to present to you this evening. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Questions or comments from the board? Trustee Correa.
Thank you, and congratulations on a zero percent suspension rate and DNF rate. That's great to hear. And thank you for listening to the community and providing that additional ESL class at Biola. I appreciate that. Can you talk a little bit about, you mentioned that you and your staff are reading the Culturally Responsive Thinking Book, and I probably butchered the title, but can you provide some examples as to how that's being applied in the classroom or just overall in the practices as you lead that campus?
I can. We are reading the book, which reinforces the nature of all of us, meeting our students where they are, kind of meeting them in their personhood, if you will. And above and beyond that, for the past couple of years, that's been a hallmark message that we have been touting at our school, and that is to just overall be very welcoming, be inclusive, and know that every single student and parent or community member that walks through our doors or calls us, they have a need. They have a want, they have a need, and we're there, and it's a privilege for us to be able to be there to help address those wants and needs, and with that mindset and mind frame to serve them in our community.
Thank you. And then, two other questions. Thank you for providing us the Fall 2023 Course catalog. So I have to ask, do we print this in any other language, or is it just available in English?
Right now, it's just in English, and our spring, we're getting ready to publish our spring, which we plan to expand into other languages.
Thank you. And then, you provided us a list of the support staff, and you identified that one of the challenges that you continue to have is the graduation rate. Is there anything else that we can do as a board that we can better support you and that campus to help bridge the gap and help those students meet their graduation requirements?
I don't know. I think the board in general, our district leadership, has been very supportive, providing resources that we need. I think it also is the nature of being an alternative school and being independent study, where we have a lot of students, wonderful students, very bright, very intelligent, very capable, yet it's just a matter of when they come to us. They are sometimes significantly down by the number of credits they need to graduate, and we work with them to try to get them there the best we can. We also invite them back for a fifth year with us, and they can graduate anytime within their fifth year of high school with us.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Then, thank you, Principal Robinson. I think I, I'm really excited about, obviously, just the continuous upward trajectory in terms of like the graduations you have had sort of year over year. I think the question I have, in some ways linking even to sort of some of the larger questions around the district in general, we have such an important facility, and in terms of, I'm also thinking in terms of, how do we invite even more students, but also just sort of parent engagement in general into potentially our central learning, our class site? And I would just sort of, just in a more of an exploratory way, you know, where you all are, we're providing this sort of emotional supports for our students that are attending there, I almost wonder, is there an opportunity, somewhat akin to like how Fresno Unified has their parent university? Do you see actually opportunities like that where, you know, like, just as many of our, even in our other sort of reports, where as we've moved out of this kind of COVID period, where students are really, at some of their home sites, really sort of struggling? And I think parents are also struggling in terms of because their kids are struggling. Could you envision potentially like a class or anywhere else being sort of a site where we can also just kind of help house sort of, almost for adults and parents of our district to just be able to kind of share and also sometimes get additional ideas and supports that they may have for their students, whether at this site or even at others?
I could see that. I think that's a need all over, but in terms of our particular campus and our school site, I would be open to that, welcome to that. I think it's a need within our district, and I could see our adult community, whether it's a need or interest or question regarding their students as independent study students or wanting to connect with some of the programs or services that we offer in our adult school, would be a complimentary place and location for them to come and receive that information and support.
No, I'm excited to, you know, potentially just continue that sort of conversation, and then even the work you all are doing so key. I was looking even countywide what our adult literacy rates are, just in general, and especially on the sort of west side of Fresno, even our adult literacy rates are very low. So sometimes that maybe translates into what types of supports even our parents can provide our students, but I think, you know, the class side is part of that solution and look to continue to work with you and figure out different sorts of supports at a site that's not our traditional sort of site in terms of really continuing and building this work. So really appreciate you coming out tonight, sharing the great work that you all are doing, and just keeping this conversation about how we can continue to integrate this site in terms of really playing a pivotal role for our special West Fresno community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For our next report, we are going to get some information regarding Bulldog Bound and our UC Merced MAP program from Assistant Superintendent Boatwright.
Thank you. So on September twenty-sixth, the board requested information on Bulldog Bound and the Merced Automatic Admissions Program, or MAP. Tonight, our college and career counselors are here to provide information on what they do for our students in addition to information on Bulldog Bound and MAP. I will let them introduce themselves and share this information. Before they do so, I'd also like to recognize our Assistant Director, Paul Burrell, and his support of this work.
All right, you can go to the, you can go to the next slide, Gilbert. All right, well, good evening. I'm Jill Brooks. I'm the College and Career Advisor at Central East High School, and I'll let my colleagues introduce themselves when they speak. So I'm just going to give you a little overview of what we do as college and career advisors. We work alongside our academic counselors to support our students for their college and career readiness. That ends up meaning that we spend a lot of our time with our seniors, but we also provide assistance and information for all of our students. So that includes working a lot on college applications, which is what we're all really busy with right now, as well as later in the year, we will work with students on the financial aid application process and then connecting all the pieces together as they make decisions about where they're going to go to college in the spring. For our students who are not college-bound, we also work a lot with our military recruiters that are local to our area in getting students connected, making sure that they take the appropriate steps, including the ASVAB, if that's something that they are interested in pursuing. We organize field trips. We work on bringing together industry partners for events on our campuses. We have an event coming up next week on November first. It'll be a CUSD, College and Career Night, where we're bringing together colleges, vocational schools, military representatives, and also just some local agencies that provide scholarships or other resources to students as soon as they graduate high school, and bringing those all together in one space to provide information. We also work with our students, particularly sophomores and juniors, who are interested in earning college credits while they're still in high school through either dual enrollment or high school enrichment. And we also work on academic, or we coordinate academic recognition at each of our sites, including our academic awards each semester and scholarship and senior award nights at the end of the year. Also, part of our job is liaising between our students and higher education institutions, particularly our local colleges and universities, including Fresno City College, Fresno State, and UC Merced, which is what we're here to share more about tonight, which is Bulldog Bound and MAP at UC Merced, and I'm going to turn it over to Renee.
Thank you, Jill. I'm Renee Lind. I'm the College and Career Advisor at Central High School. And Fresno State's Bulldog Bound program is a partnership that, as you know, we are involved in. It is a guaranteed admissions program for students in grades nine through twelve, as long as they meet the criteria and the academic criteria to be there, or they're on pace to meet that criteria. Students are, they are accepted, they can be accepted as early as ninth grade, and it just kind of keeps them on pace to help, just another avenue for them to understand what is required, you know, covers the A through G and all of that. We, so, we have presented this through classroom presentations, so we've sent out the information to students through presentations. We still have some classes to get to. We've also shared this out to parents through Parent Square, but we're really excited about next Wednesday's event, because that is when Fresno State is going to come and do a presentation to our community. So we're hoping to gather some more students to be a part of Bulldog Bound there.
Good evening. My name is Jane Isaac, and I'm the College and Career Advisor at Justin Garza High School. So I'm going to share a little bit about UC Merced's MAP program. It stands for Merced Automatic Admission Program. This is a partnership that our district has with UC Merced that allows for students to be able to get guaranteed admissions before the window opens, typically in the fall. So this past year, it opened up in March, and students were able to submit applications up until July first for this application window, which opened up August first. So currently, we have seven students who applied for this guaranteed admission, and six of them were admitted. One student is still working out on the eligibility portion, but we are very excited about the potential of this program. Because Justin Garza was newer, I know that there were some things with juniors not quite ready to receive information about applications, so we look forward to expanding this opportunity in the future. We are working actively to get the word out about Merced, UC Merced. We have conducted field trips, campus visits, we've had their team come to present to our students, and so we definitely know that this is a program that will improve and increase in the coming months. We thank you so much for your time this evening to give an update about these two university programs, and at this time, we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the board? Trustee Correa.
Thank you. You touched upon a couple of the questions, so I just want to follow up. Thank you for all the work that you guys are doing. We hear great things from our students and our families as well. You mentioned that we are conducting campus visits to UC Merced. Is that happening, are we offering those at every one of our campuses? Okay.
Yeah.
And then, what about Fresno State? I know that it's in our backyard and it's local, but...
I don't think any of us have gone to Fresno State yet this year. We all did trips to Fresno State last year. There's a lot of construction on Fresno State's campus right now, and it really lowers the quality of a tour. There's not a lot for kids to see, they don't take them inside of buildings, and it was really difficult to hear. So we have Fresno State representatives on each of our campuses once a week, and they share information with students, and they are great at giving, you know, they've got pictures and PowerPoints, and honestly, that's a better way almost for kids to get information. So we kind of collectively decided we would wait until Fresno State got a little more settled before we took a field trip over there. But yeah, we have done it in the past.
Thank you. And then, there was a mention, we're communicating the opportunities through UC Merced and Fresno State through Parent Square, classroom presentations, and then the presentation next week. Are we ensuring that we're doing that in languages in addition to English, and can you guys just talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, the information has gone out in multiple languages, so the information we've been given from Fresno State is, has been translated, and we've sent all of that out. The presentations have not been done in other languages, but that's something that we can ask Fresno State about. They're typically the ones delivering that information, so we would have to defer to them.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work. Appreciate it, and please don't take any of my comments in attack by any way, but out of three campuses and we have seven students that have applied, that's not enough. I kind of feel like it's one of the best hidden secrets in our district, and so I'm concerned with the way that we're actually getting this information out and how we're getting it out. We can't, and again, I'm not offering any constructive criticism, but I kind of feel like what I'm hearing is we're allowing them to get the information out, and sometimes when we're getting the information out, at least what I've been told, it's usually already in their senior year. That's kind of putting us behind the eight ball, as opposed to being more proactive. But again, I see the energy and I see the focus, and so I'm really looking forward to the outcomes for next year. But it is truly an opportunity that I think that our kids have to get into a UC campus that is in our backyard. I always tell people, you can drive from here to Fresno State in a half an hour, you can drive from here to UC Merced in forty-five minutes. But I think it's no secret that the UC system of California is the best teaching institution, public teaching institution in the world, and it's right here. And I feel like we have a better opportunity for our kids to take advantage of it if they knew more about it. And then, another thing I had a question about, because I think when people talk about either going to college, especially kids that are coming from financially impacted homes, are they getting all the information that they need? Because the vast majority of kids that don't think they can afford to go to UC, or even Fresno State for that matter, can. And is that information getting out, and are you seeing a barrier in that aspect?
So we are in the classrooms doing presentations, financial aid presentations, and we do give that information, and one of the things, I mean, I do hit home, and I tell these students, you know, it does not matter where you came from, it matters where you're going. And, you know, anyone can go to Fresno City College. It doesn't matter if you've messed up these first few years, as long as you have that diploma, you can go to Fresno City College, and right now, it's paid for. You know, take advantage of that. Financial aid, we push financial aid, we really, I know our financial aid application, do you remember what the actual data was?
Eighty-seven percent.
Yeah, eighty-seven percent of our families applied for financial aid, or failed, a hundred percent either applied or failed at the waiver. But, but yes, we do give that information.
And then I have one more comment in regards to, I just lost my train of thought. I lost it, sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah. Trustee Millie?
Thank you. This is really great information, and I'm excited for it, but I have a question regarding some of the students that are seeking to go out of state. What are we offering them, and kind of a follow-up question, do we have any type of prep classes for either the ACT or the SAT that could start preparing them for that test if they would like to go out of state?
I think it's interesting that you bring up out of state. Our focus, I want to say, has been mostly California. We have so many institutions, like you were saying, UC is, you know, one of the world's leading institutions, so really, honestly, we do focus a lot on what's available in California. And students who want to pursue going out of state, a lot of them tend to be like athletes or, you know, they have family out of state, we ask for them to meet with us so that we can research the qualifications, their criteria for the different universities that they're interested in. There is such a wide range of what is required from state to state. Not all states require SAT anymore, some...
Not all states require SAT anymore, some still do, some have no idea what the A through G requirements are, they require extra courses. So, for students who want to head out of state, we really have to focus and give them individualized attention to really see what is, you know, being required of them. As for the SAT, because it's no longer required for students to have SAT scores for CSU and UC admission, we do not provide SAT study sessions or anything like that. I know that at Garza, we provide the student guide that comes from College Board, I believe the other two sites as well. So, students are able to access study materials that are provided by College Board, but we currently don't offer anything above that.
Thank you. One follow-up question, do, are you guys pulling the students out and actually interacting with them and talking about what their, their plans potentially could be? I know things change. I'm just curious how often that happens.
Yeah. We work very closely with the academic counselors, and they're, they're currently working one-on-one, meeting with students one-on-one, and so, we partner with them a lot about talking through the future, the, the future goals that students have, and we give resources, but yes, we do meet students, like, every day right now, especially with this application window, we're meeting with students one-on-one as well, going through and talking about what the options are, talking about financial aid, talking about just the different ranges of options that are available.
Great, thank you.
Trustee Crifon?
Thank you, President Singh. Thank you, the three of you, for the work you're doing to connect our kids who want to go to college as they get to go to a great university. We have an abundance of great choices here in the state of California. I just wanted to ask a little bit question about the UC Merced program. How much communication are we bringing to our students about the fee waivers that University of California provides? And do we tell them how they qualify?
Yes, so, if you're unaware, when a student applies to either a CSU or a UC, there's a fee for that, for each school that they apply to. For the CSU, it's a seventy-dollar fee, for the UC system, it's an eighty-dollar fee, they increased it this year. Both systems do offer students the opportunity to qualify for four fee waivers within the application. So, there is not a, a trick to it, so to speak, there's not a code that we can give. There are two questions within each application in regards to family size and annual household income, and their answers to those two questions determine whether or not they qualify for a fee waiver. For the UC application, there is the opportunity for us to provide them a NACAC fee waiver. NACAC is a National Counseling Association, and so, that's a mail-in option for a fee waiver, and we give students those as well. So, we conduct all of those applications in a workshop setting that students sign up for, and we, we work with them in a workshop setting, and so, we provide that information through that. And then we also regularly tell students to have us review their application before they submit it. So, there's oftentimes, students may have mis, misrepresented their household income, or they may have entered it twice, there's two different spots where they can enter it, they only need to enter it in one. So, we double-check that and try to make sure that as many students as possible can get the fee waiver if they're qualified.
Thank you. I'm glad you double-checked that, just a comment on that, because I feel it's very critical that when applying for colleges, it's one of the most stressful times for seniors or juniors, and there's a big worry that, you know, with the cost of tuition, you know, why would I throw away eighty dollars, you know, per application? I may not even get in. But for a lot of students, they do qualify, and they qualify for up to four free, four waivers, so four UCs you can apply to for free, and then you pay eighty dollars. And if one of those is UC Merced, and you're meeting the requirements, that's a free shot at a UC. I hope we're communicating the, you know, the cost benefit to our students that are making these decisions, because it's a great way to guarantee if you want to go to UC, you get to go to UC in one that's in our backyard. Thank you.
Trustee Coria, and then trustee Sellers.
One additional question, just following up on what trustee Cervantes and his express sentiment, what can we do as a board, and particularly I as a trustee, to, to help you all? I know that it's, we have a lot of students, and we're constantly talking to students and our families, so how can we help you support our students and also bring more awareness to the current programs that we have available through Fresno State and Merced? So...
So, we, we do sometimes feel like we put out a lot of information, I think you mentioned, it's like, we, we put the information out and the students have to receive it, and you asked, are we able to meet with every student one-on-one? Realistically, the volume of students that we have, do we get a chance to meet with every single student? That, that may or may not happen. We do, with Garza having seniors this year, that has spread out the love a little bit, so that'll make it a little bit easier. But it's really the information delivery. So, for example, the event that we have next week, making sure that, that's not just coming from the three of us, but that that's coming from a district level, and that's being advertised appropriately would be helpful. And I think just maintaining high, a high language of academics and central unified, making sure that we are continually encouraging our kids to be proud of being college-bound students, and proud of the opportunities that that can provide. And so, that, you know, just making sure that that's a consistent message throughout our district is always going to be helpful to us, so that when we have these conversations, we aren't the first people who are, who are speaking to them about this.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks.
Trustee Sellers?
Hi, thank you. You may have mentioned, I apologize, do we meet with all grade levels in high school?
Do we?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, we, all three of us, we present to each class, we talk about A through G requirements, we talk about graduation requirements. So, the focus for us has typically been seniors at the beginning of the year, then we work through the juniors, then the sophomores, and then the freshmen. But our goal is to make sure that when students, even in their first year in high school, they are aware of what is going to be needed for them to graduate, and then what is needed for them to be college-bound, because those are two different sets of requirements.
As far as some of our students that are gifted, and you know, as a freshman, have an idea of direction, the way they want to go already, are you available to help them decide which courses they should be taking as far as AP or dual enrollment and things of that nature? And what, what's transferable to which universities?
Yes, we do that quite often. So, we will often meet with students, especially those that are interested in kind of creating a pathway that goes all the way through high school and how they can kind of maximize, especially now that we are adding more opportunities through dual enrollment and high school enrichment and kind of piecing together. So, we will, we will often sit down with a student and map out, map out a plan for how they can sort of best, best create the best resume for themselves, I guess, so to speak. And I'll give advice on, you know, join this club, because this club is going to volunteer a lot, and you're going to get a lot of volunteer hours, and, and we can help them kind of, kind of get, get ready to give the best foot forward.
My last question then is, as far as students who are coming into their freshman year, is there an orientation or something available to them?
So, we did actually, we met with the middle school counselors, we're super excited to have middle school counselors, because like I said, the earlier that this language can start, we would love, like, if a sixth grader knows that if they take Spanish and math in junior high, that they will have a better chance of getting into a UC, that helps us. Because we often get these kids, and sometimes they've already made decisions that are going to hurt their chances. So, you mentioned like a freshman, if we have a freshman that we can talk to and we can make sure that they know, you know, even when all your friends stop taking math after year three, if you can push yourself to take a fourth year of math, that's going to make a huge difference. Those are the kind of conversations that we, that we want to have. So, as far as eighth grade orientation, we, our academic counselors have handled that because it's typically been geared towards course selection for the first year of high school and kind of an orientation for the high school in general. But with us now having middle school counselors, that's something that when we met, we talked with them about, that we can make sure we have a consistent message, starting in seventh grade all the way through high school.
Okay. And then is that conversations had with the students only, or families and parents?
When, when they do the eighth grade orientation? I believe parents are invited as well, yeah.
Thank you.
And in particular for Garza, I believe that there is an eighth grade parent meeting coming up. I don't know the date for, for sure yet, but I know it's, it's in the books, it's on the calendar. I can, I can provide that information later for you.
All right, thank you. I had a question about the dual enrollment. So, at what point in time do our students at Central Unified qualify for the dual enrollment that we offer? Is it their sophomore year, freshman year, junior year?
So, it'll vary by site. So, if they're a student at Central High School, they would start their freshman year. At Garza and at Central East High School, it would start later. So, it depends on which pathway they're part of. So, we have dual enrollment offerings in a couple of our elective courses, like Engineering Drafting I, or Child Development, and those are courses that students could potentially be in as a sophomore, or they may be taking them as a senior. Whatever age they are when they're in that class is when they would participate in that dual enrollment. And then for the new classes that we're offering this year at Garza and Central East, those are going to be for juniors and seniors, well, juniors and seniors at East and seniors at Garza, and those are the English and history courses. As far as the other option for students to earn college credit, which is high school enrichment, where they're doing it independently, the colleges have a, have their procedures in place that students can start that as sophomores, so that's when we start counseling students to do that.
Okay. Thank you for that.
But as you know, at Central High School, they start as freshmen. The students that are on a pathway to receive their AA, they start as freshmen.
Yep, I got a couple more. So, what I kind of feel like, you don't have to say it, I feel like there's not enough of you. And I know that this board has been pushing to add additional counselors to start this dialogue earlier, and we've added some additional counselors at the high school level as well. But I still feel like you're understaffed, and I don't know that for a fact, but do we know what a counselor-student ratio is at our... I mean, how many, how many students is one of our counselors responsible for?
Our academic counselors? I'd have to go to Tammy.
I don't have that data right in front of me, but it varies between three and 300 per.
Well, where I'm going with it is that we, we can't technically put people in a position to fail. And if you're overwhelmed with work, and you cannot, and you do not have the resources to do your job at the most adequate level, I, I, we would like to know about it. But with that, again, I'm very grateful for what you do do, and the resources that you do utilize. And, and I have nothing against Fresno State, by the way, I'm a big Fresno State fan. I just want to make sure that we give students another choice that is relatively local and in our backyard. And this board worked very difficult with the staff to make sure that we could ensure and bring these types of programs to our students, and so, we're, we're very excited about it. And thank you again. And again, please do not take any of my words in any shape or form as being harsh or unappreciative, but sometimes we have to apply some constructive tension. And that tension could mean it's for the board as well, I'm not necessarily talking about you or, or the staff. But thank you for that, I appreciate that.
I, I have a few questions, but I want to, I think Dr. Boatright wanted to share a little bit about some of the different questions that we've, we've raised.
Yes, so, thank you so much, and I, I appreciate our college and career counselors answering some of these questions. But to refer to your question on trustee Sellers, so, our academic counselors at the high school do meet with every single student, so they do work with them on a four-year plan. So, those, they start with, they review, first of all, the plans that the seniors have, then they work back with the juniors, our sophomores, and then our freshmen. So, all of our students will have a four-year plan before they go on winter break. So, so that is something that's in place. So, our college and career counselors don't meet with them necessarily on those four-year plans, but like Ms. Isaac said, when they are, are on a specific pathway, they do make sure that they do meet with those students and make sure that they're on track. And then also, you asked a question about the eighth grade parent night, those will be scheduled before Thanksgiving break. So, again, those are working more through our academic counselors, our GLDs, and then also our middle school academic counselors, which we're thrilled to have this year.
Can I ask one question to that then?
Of course.
How, how often are they meeting with the students?
Well, so, the seniors and the juniors, they're met with more often, okay? Because they're getting close to that finish line, so they really want to make sure that they're solidly on track to graduation and ready to go to the university that they select or the technical school that they select, whatever their, whatever their choice may be. Our younger students are not met with quite as often. But, but of course, our, our counselors are always available to meet with those students, so let's say that a student wants to meet with a counselor or a parent contacts the school side and requests a meeting, those are definitely held.
Okay. Those students that, I'm trying to think of the frequency, is it once a week, once a month, once a semester, just once a year, how, how often?
I can definitely bring that information back to you, I can get more specifics.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, if I can interject very quickly, it sounds like we do have a lot of questions about what kind of academic support and, and items and staff we have available for our students. I just want to remind us that this item is specifically regarding our Bulldog Bound and MAP program, so perhaps I think there would be consensus from our board to bring back an item here soon that provides us more information, I think, a better understanding of the role that you've shared with us, what you do, and also the distinction between our academic counselors and then any other support in between that.
I guess the only, thank you for, for centering that, trustee Coria. I think the only question I, I would have is sort of to trustee Cervantes' point is just giving our students more options, like, you know, looking at our sort of UC admission rates, they're probably lower than where they could be, but, but I think this, the MAP program gives us a sort of pathway. I'm just interested in terms of how, how are we making sure our academic counselors are involved, where they have the information about the program, and just the consistency in terms of so that they, they feel, you know, as experts on, on this, and then during these one-on-one meetings, which we'll talk about at a later point, to make sure that that's being sort of conveyed.
So, we, like I mentioned at the beginning, we work alongside our academic counselors, we're all considered part of the counseling team, so we attend counseling meetings and share information about this. I don't know that, that it has been shared one-on-one with students when they're meeting with them, so that is a good idea that we can take back to make sure that they are well aware of what the details of it are. The MAP program in particular, the timing of it, we got it very late in the year, and we had sort of a short period of time to get students to apply. We will have additional students this year who apply to UC Merced, and a lot of them, they've missed the window of time to apply for MAP, but we do know that based on prior statistics, that they're, that if they're qualified, they, their admission chances are pretty good. And that is one of the reasons we do go do field trips to UC Merced, because it is, it is a, kind of like you said, it's a hidden gem, a lot of kids don't know about it, and, you know, when you're seventeen, the idea of moving to Merced isn't super exciting, so getting them on campus is really key for us. If we, if we just talk about it, that's, it's hard for them to really envision what's offered there. And so, you know, UC Merced continues to grow, they continue to offer more programs, and they're still sort of finding and, and fine-tuning what their expertise is. They added a new BA to MD program last year, that's really enticing to a lot of our students. They only take twelve students right now, so we didn't have anybody get it last year, but we're fingers crossed for this year. So, trying to, trying to steer students there and let them know sort of what UC Merced is going to be known for, what they're experts in, I think is going to help us down the road as well, as they're still sort of trying to find their identity within the UC system. But yes, we continue to try to offer it as an option and encourage students to look into it, because we all find it really impressive. It's one of my favorite campuses to visit, it's a beautiful campus. So, we continue to try to make sure that kids know about it and, and let them make their final decision.
And final question, especially in terms of the MAP program, are there any adjustments in terms of our A to G that we've seen in terms of like, and, you know, one that, students are, yeah, mostly students are brought up to me in terms of the Spanish language requirement, like, especially if they take Spanish at the junior high, wanting that to be sort of similar where it could count, like, if they take two years at the junior high, it actually counts for two years, as opposed to the present one year. Is that anything we've noticed in terms of, for those that are UC-bound, and especially for the MAP program, that any of our, any alignments around our A through G programming?
So, cur, currently, if a student takes Spanish in junior high, it's only one year of credit. So, they take two years of junior high Spanish, and then they receive one year of high school credit, and then they do an additional new year at the high school. So, we, we, that hasn't necessarily changed. We have had some students with the, just in an effort to kind of, kind of customize their own schedule, we have had some students who have looked into the option of fulfilling that A through G requirement through the community college, they can do that through high school enrichment, and that allows them, since our graduation requirement is the visual performing arts or the foreign language, that allows them to leave space in their schedule for maybe other electives or other items that they want to take. So, that's part of when we have... So that's part of when we have those individual meetings with students and we're kind of trying to help them piece together the best opportunities for themselves. We do look at A through G, and that is one of the options when we, um, when we look at our admissions guides for UC and CSU. There are alternative routes to meet some of those A through G requirements. So when a student gets into a situation where they may not have time to finish everything. There are options for validation where they can take a higher level math and it will cancel out a, a previous grade. There are options to do that in foreign language as well. Um, and then there are options to fulfill requirements through community college. So we try to make sure when a student may not meet those A through G, that we work with them to kind of seek out every possible option to make sure that they stay qualified.
Thank you. Really appreciate the three of you and Dr. Boatright for bringing this subject up to us. Thank you so much. We next turn to our superintendent and board communications.
I will try to run through just a couple of them quickly. I want to thank our, many of our schools, some of which are represented here who participated in this weekend's Biola Raisin Parade. We had a great turnout. Um, our transition or Connections program was involved, our Folklorico. Our Pershing FFA, our El Capitan and Glacier Point Choir and Band, Biola Strings and Cheer, Central East High School Cheer. Um, Central High School and Central High School, Justin Garza's, um, Steppers Interact, Folklorico. It was a really great turnout. And so it was very enjoyable to be in attendance. Uh, you may be seeing a lot on social media or at schools right now. We are in the midst of Red Ribbon Week, to say that carefully. Um, it's a tongue twister, but across the school district, our schools are participating. Campuses are having themed dress up days to try to make sure, um, students are aware of the importance of living drug-free and healthy life. Um, the, the making positive choices is, is embedded in a lot of the activities that are being done. I do want to invite you tomorrow night at Justin Garza High School. Uh, Jeff Garrett has, our area administrator and the team have been hard at work, um, to make sure we're ready for the Lights On after-school program event. We are one of five in the state, uh, who have been selected to host a Lights On event for the programming that we have. Uh, this is a community event that we have partnered with Fresno County Superintendent of Schools. Uh, partnership for children and youth, uh, teaching fellows. And just celebrates the many benefits of our programming, um, and investments made to after-school programs. So um, the event will feature a guided tour, a showcase of the various after-school programs. The event starts at 6:00 PM. Uh, and you are invited to attend. Uh, the, what was already mentioned, they did a great plug, so I, I, I won't, uh, just say that the College and Career Night is next week, November 1st at 5:30 at Justin Garza. And this evening, there are two resolutions. I just want to make a quick comment too on the consent agenda. Um, declaring November as National Native American Heritage Month. And also, uh, November as SIC Heritage Month as well. And so we're excited that we've added some social media. Um, campaigning around each of these resolutions that we had, trying to get out to, um, tell the story around, um, our community and, and our resources. So thank you, Gilbert, for that.
Thank you, Superintendent Davis. Any other board members wishing to share some communications? Trustee Correa?
Um, I just want to share that I had the privilege of attending the Rosava Elementary Coats for Kids. And it was a lot of fun just to see all the little kids and help them, um, get their sweaters on. Uh, so thank you again. Um, to our foundation and to our executive director, Serena Dohe, for the great job that she's doing. Um, and for all of our staff that was able to attend.
Thank you, trustee Correa. Trustee Kefan?
Thank you, President Singh. Uh, I want to give a thanks to, uh, Superintendent Davis, Gilbert Malgon, and our, uh, Garza team. For putting on a great, uh, Fresno County Trustees Dinner Association. We got to, uh, show off, uh, Justin Garza High to all the other school districts in Fresno County. I think they were thoroughly impressed. And also, um, congratulations to, um, Mrs. Pollan at Central East for putting on a great show, the, uh, the play Where Everything Goes Wrong. Um, a lot of people had a great time. Hope everyone here had the chance to, uh, see it.
Thank you, trustee Kefan. Next we move to comments from the public. Uh, we invite, uh, members in our physical audience to, if they'd like any, um, to, to share comments. Um, and I'll turn to clerk, uh, Kefan if he has any. And also to make sure to invite, uh, those that may be viewing us and joining us virtually if they have any comments as well.
Thank you, President Singh. Uh, I have one comment here from Tia Lorta and Thaddeus Lewis Lorta. If they can please come up. Hopefully I pronounced your name right. If not, I apologize.
You did good.
Hello, my name is Thaddeus. Um, I'm a student at Connections. Um, two weeks ago, uh, at my school, um, I was threatened at, and with my cousin, Javion, um, he was, I was assaulted by him by socking me in the chest. And, um, he was also threatening other people, like my friends. And then there's another student in my class that, um, it's, that is communicating with him, is doing the same thing also. And, um, and not, I'm not feeling, I'm not feeling this way. It's my friends to their own. They are not okay with my cousin being at school because he is just being rude to staff and cussing me out all month since high school at the Central High School.
My name is Tia Lorta, and Thaddeus is my son. So there was an incident brewing at Connections on October 3rd, to a point my son was assaulted by another student. It was totally unprovoked and the student was acting erratic from the moment he arrived at school. After the assault, police were called out and the student was picked up by a family member and taken home. After three days of suspension, that student came back to the classroom. My son would still have to be in a classroom with his bullying attacker. I was told nothing more would happen until we obtained a restraining order. We were responsible to take legal action or nothing else would be done. My son and the rest of the, the rest of the class are in an unsafe, potentially violent repeat situation. So I've kept my son home until the powers that be can keep my son and the rest of the students safe from the student. The resources and supports in place are not enough for safety on the campus. Thaddeus loves being at Connections and has missed his friends, his teacher, and Mr. Robinson. So we came out here this evening to share his experience in hopes that there's a safer solution for everyone. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. We, we, we appreciate all, all the comments. I just want to just share, so we're not able to directly, uh, comment, but you will have follow-up from the, from the school district. Appreciate you sharing tonight. Are there any, uh, Gilbert, any comments from?
We have, uh, no one holding.
And clerk Kefan, any other, uh, comments from those in the room this evening? Thank you. Then we move on to our consent agenda. Uh, do I, do I have a motion from the board?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by trustee Solis. I have a second by trustee Cervantes. Uh, these include, um, as, uh, superintendent Davis shared, uh, both our, uh, resolution declaring November, uh, 2023 as National Native American Heritage Month, as well as, uh, declaring November 2023 as SIC Heritage Month. Um, if, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. We move on to our action items. Our first, um, action item is Student Discipline Case 2324002. Do I have a motion?
I move to accept the recommendation.
We have a, we have a motion to accept the recommendation by trustee Correa. We have a second by trustee Solis. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining? Motion carries seven zero. We move on to action item number two, accept gifts to the district. Assistant Superintendent Iqbal.
Good evening. Uh, adminis- administration is requesting the board to accept gift to the district. As a follow-up, the district will send a thank you letter to the donor for their support.
Questions or comments from the board? Do I have a motion?
I'll move to accept the gift.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Correa. We have a second by trustee Kefan. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining? Motion carries seven zero. Item, uh, action item M3, approve out-of-state travel. Dr. Boatright?
The following request is for out-of-state travel for Central High School teacher Yasenia Ramirez. Um, to attend the National FFA Convention and Expo. Administration is recommending the board approve this out-of-state travel request.
Questions or comments from the board? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion by trustee Correa, a second by trustee Kefan. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining? Motion carries seven zero. Item M4, hold a public hearing and approve Quarterly Williams Uniform Complaint Procedure. Dr. Boatright?
Thank you. So this quarterly report provides information when there are deficiencies reported regarding sufficient materials for students or facilities complaints. There were no deficiencies reported for this quarter. Administration is recommending that a public hearing be held tonight and then approval of the October Quarterly Williams Complaint Procedure.
Thank you. So then we will, um, open it up for the, for the, uh, public hearing.
Setting 30 seconds. Thirty seconds have passed and we have no comments by phone at this time.
Thank you, Gilbert. Do I, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing? Do I have a, a motion?
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Cervantes, a second by trustee Correa. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining? Motion carries seven zero. Next we move to approve devices for our school-to-home expansion. Mr. Martinez?
Yes, uh, good evening, Superintendent Davis, members of the board, and, uh, president, board president Singh. Uh, tonight, the item I'm bringing to you directly for action is, um, to expand the district school-to-home program. Uh, the school-to-home program is a technology assistance program that the district maintains to provide a district, uh, uh, technology device with internet access, uh, to students who may not have access, uh, to one or internet, uh, off-campus. Um, the, the demand for, uh, for the devices this year has exceeded our current inventory. Uh, we're, are, we are requesting 230 Chromebooks, uh, included with the two-year contract with T-Mobile, um, a 4G LTE service. The 230 Chromebooks is a one-time cost of $49,843. Um, and the 24-month contract was a total cost of $110,400. Um, administration is recommending the board approve devices for, uh, the school-to-home program. Um, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Questions or comments from the board? Trustee Correa?
Thank you, Dr. Martinez. Um, I do have a couple of questions, probably more for our assistant superintendent and superintendent. How are we evaluating how many we need? I know you mentioned that the current need exceeds our inventory. So how are we evaluating and measuring what those needs are?
Well, at this, at this time, um, at the beginning, the, before the, uh, beginning of the school year, an interest form was sent out with Parent Square to kind of gather how many we may need for the school year. Um, well, we've, our applications have already exceeded the interest. Uh, and then also the only data we had was from last year, and we've already exceeded that number as well. Um, so at this point, it's just more as on-demand and we're trying to keep up with the trend. Um, for how many applications are coming in daily and weekly.
Thank you. And so I understand that we are, um, using interest forms. Are we using any other processes to ensure that our students with the most needs, which I would identify as our migrant, uh, ed students, our newcomers? Um, and then our unhoused students that we're accounting for them and ensuring that if they're not completing those interest forms, that we are still including them in the account and whatever other, um, processes, we have to ensure that they also have the technology they need to be able to participate effectively.
Yes. So we started the school year, we had a, a pretty good idea through something that's called the Fresno Coalition for Digital Inclusion. There's a map that's there that gives us an idea of what we need. Um, but we did, as Mr. Martinez said, did send out that interest form at the start of the school year. Um, knowing now that we do have our family outreach liaisons in place, that's going to be really a big key component for us next year and making sure that we actually, um, are better able to capture all of those student groups at the onset. So when we started to hand out, um, the inventory that we had, we started with the high school because all of their math curriculum is digital. And so we knew that the greatest need would be there. But what we found is that some of our students that, um, that also need a device never completed that interest form. And so what we did is once our liaisons were on board and in place, we had them start to reach out to families that they knew would probably need a device that we hadn't captured in that interest form. And so now those students that are identified that are part of those groups, like our families in transition or migrant students. If they did not receive a device, we've given them a temporary device. Now while we're in the process of getting this order placed to fulfill the inventory needs that we have.
Okay. And are we providing these interest forms? Well, how are we providing these interest, this interest forms?
So it went out through Parent Square in, in multiple languages.
And are we using any other means other than Parent Square? I've, I've received some concerns from some of our families that are non-English speakers and who may be illiterate and have technology issues. So I'm wondering how are we bridging the gap? Because to me, those would be the students. I think it sounds like we've already identified and we're using the current staff and resources we have. Um, so perhaps next year we won't have as many of these concerns.
Yes.
Um, but I'm wondering how we can better improve our current system to ensure that our families, again, who are in, in the most need are receiving, uh, these resources since we do have some, some funds to be able to support.
Right. So, so going into the new school year, we'll have a better process in place, again, really utilizing our family outreach liaisons. Our technology aides that are at the school site to have a better idea, a firmer number on that need at the start of the school year so that we're prepared. Um, when school starts to hand out those devices to our families that need them.
Okay, thank you. And if I can request, and if there's no objection from the board, um, whenever administration feels it's appropriate, but that we get an information item as a presentation, just so that before the next year, we can en- ensure that our families um, who are watching our meetings or that we as board members are better educated as well to be able to provide that information. And also help our district bridge the gap wherever there is a need. Because we do have over 16,000 students. And I know that you all work very effectively and efficiently, but we can also do our part. So if, if we can just get a presentation um, so that we know how we can help our families and redirect them to either those community liaisons or principals and the appropriate staff. So thank you.
We'll work together on that.
Superintendent Davis?
If I can also add, one group that we're not speaking to, that's often the, the first voice to the question you're asking is the classroom teacher. So classroom teachers are making contact with tech aides, uh, getting the word out and, and the, the significant change that wasn't mentioned, but that, uh, we've realized in, in these numbers is last year's Chromebook devices were turned in. Um, those devices were out of date. They weren't doing the updates. They were having problems with, um, their, their need. And so they brought those back. And so even though we had an idea by map of who didn't have digital access, once those devices that had gone out during COVID uh, and were in use at school-to-home were no longer in place, they've gotten to really rely on those. And so we saw an uptick that way as well. We wouldn't expect to see something unknown like that in, in the coming year. Um, that's what we're experiencing currently now.
Trustee Cervantes?
Thank you for this work. Um, I might be a little confused, so I apologize for my, my question. These Chromebooks also come with a hotspot device?
Uh, it comes with internet built into it. So the Chromebook itself has internet on it.
And, and the reason why I'm asking, is it a different service than what we were offering before? Than T-Mobile versus whoever it was before?
Correct. Previously, it was a hotspot that was offered.
Correct.
Um, which allowed, um, multiple devices to connect to it. But at this point, now it's just the Chromebook device itself. But at this point, now it's just the Chromebook device itself, um, with, um, with the internet built in.
Okay, well, I think this is huge if each one of those devices has its way to connect and the reason why the little black boxes, if there were multiple people trying to utilize it at the same time, it would drop. So I heard a lot from the pa- uh, parents about that and students about that. So, um, again, appreciate your work and what a great way to spend some COVID funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by, uh, trustee Solis, we have a second by trustee Correa. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes seven, seven zero. Thank you. Next, we move on to Adopt Resolution Twenty-three, Twenty-four, Sole Source Procurement. Assistant Superintendent Nick Ball.
The district does businesses with certain entities whose product, material, supply and services are only available from one source. Administration is asking the board to adopt the Sole Source Resolution that will allow the district to approve sole source procurement up to the stated amount.
Questions or comments from the board? Trustee Correa.
Can you remind us what Sole Source is, please?
Sole Source is a, a vendor that provides services, material that is kind of, they have their rights, like a proprietary rights that cannot be sold like Apple. Apple could be Sole Source because you cannot buy A- Apple from anyone else, so that'd be one good example.
Any motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Correa, we have a second by trustee Solis. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining. Motion carries, uh, six zero with trustee, uh, Cervantes absent. Thank you. We move on to our information items. Uh, receive information regarding Resolution Twenty-three, Twenty-four, Sixteen, Designating Tuesday, December twelfth, twenty twenty-three as the annual organizational meeting of the Board of Trustees. Superintendent Davis?
Thank you, you'll see the resolution is attached. We do recommend this item returned to the November fourteenth agenda, uh, for action, which would declare the board meeting, the regular board meeting scheduled Tuesday, December twelfth, to be that organizational meeting.
If there's any objection, can we move this to consent? Thank you so much, it'll return as consent. Uh, number two, receive annual authorization to purchase via piggybackable cooperative purchasing contracts. Assistant Superintendent Nick Ball.
Approval of P- Piggyback Contract will assist the district to make efficient and cost-effective procurement. The use of Piggyback Contracts benefits the district by reducing administrative time and expense and at the same time, receiving favorable pricing for a contract. Administration is requesting the item be placed on November fourteen board agenda for action.
Questions or comments from the board? If no, no questions or comments at this time, can this return as consent? Thank you so much, Assistant Superintendent Nick Ball, it'll return at our next meeting, uh, on the consent agenda. Item number three, receive information regarding Advantec Contract. Assistant Superintendent Nick Ball.
Advantec is a third-party claim administrator that provides operational support services to the district's self-funded insurance plan. Currently, the staff is evaluating the contract renewal, this is a placeholder holder. Administration is requesting that this item be placed on November fourteenth board agenda for action.
Trustee Correa?
So I know you mentioned administration is evaluating the contract. Do we ever ask, um, any of our employees for their feedback as to how responsive or helpful, um, they are in supporting them and, and helping them?
Well, from the staff side, I'm just evaluating it, so I haven't, we haven't done that part. I'm just looking at the contract, looking at the pricing and what we get out of this contract. So that's the evaluation I'm doing and we can look into that, to what, what the staff would like.
Do we, yeah, and I don't know if you may know this, I understand you just joined our district, but if anyone else knows, do we ask for feedback from our employees just to see the effectiveness?
So, so the Health Committee, uh, made up of, uh, management, CSCA and CUTA representation is a collective body that, um, does, uh, take feedback from, uh, their, uh, representative groups and, and oftentimes brings that feedback back to the committee for discussion. So I would say that's, it happens regularly, especially when there's nuances or new additions or, uh, potential subtractions to the plan, um, or how the services are going. I think there's regular input collected from those three parts that do provide some valuable input to it. Um, outside of that committee, there isn't a formal way to, or, or a process in place currently that collects feedback outside of that committee, if that helps.
But that committee is collecting feedback, but just from their representative groups?
Representative groups, so, uh, the teachers will bring in their side, CSCA will bring in their information, manager will bring in their information and then discuss the challenges, some of the successes or some of the nuances that requires further discussion.
Thank you.
The benefits administrator also is a part of that committee and so that individual collects information from any, um, candidate who has insurance and that also is brought in. I know comments and, and input will come through Letty as well.
Trustees Solis?
Are we taking this contract out to bid?
No, we, it's going to be a contract renewal.
So we have an option of dropping the contract?
We can, uh, the only problem is going to be, is, uh, starting December first, who's going to manage the health insurance program? So we really don't have a whole lot of time.
Then I guess we should have started looking into another contract sooner, right?
Yes, in the future, that's what my plan is. So that's one of the reasons I'm evaluating, to see what's there and what's not there. But, uh, this is the only one right now, option we have.
Okay, I'm concerned with, uh, uh, service this company is giving. I've received information, I've had experience with it myself. Um, my concern is the left hand doesn't know what the right hand's doing. Employees are receiving apologies for they, they are to provide contracted services and they routinely, um, without authorization exceed their authority. And that's one of the, as far as customer service is concerned, I think it would be very easy to find a company that could give you a higher level of customer service. Thank you.
I'll take into this.
If there's no other, uh, comments at this time and, and the point, uh, by trustee Solis will receive, we can return this as action.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Next, receive information regarding Google worksheet, oh, sorry, Google Workspace licenses. I spend too much time on Google worksheets. Um, Director Martinez?
Uh, good evening again. Um, bringing this item, uh, forward to you is to renew our Google Workspace licensing. The district, um, uses, uh, Google Workspace as the primary, uh, for email, uh, calendar, drive, uh, even Google Classroom for our classrooms. Um, Google has updated their licensing model, um, and so we, uh, want to renew that adi- for an additional year. The total cost is sixty-four thousand. Uh, administration is recommending this item be placed on the November fourteenth, uh, board agenda for, for action. Um, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Trustee Correa?
Thank you. Um, I had a couple of questions because I don't recall, at least since I've been on the board approving this license before. Um, I understand that the price has increased and so that's what, one of the reasons why it's coming before the board. But I think I also noticed that we're adding student licenses this time. So did we not have them before and what were we doing before?
Correct, so previously, the license was only covering, uh, our teaching staff because of the teaching tools that they were using in the classroom. Um, but Google switched that model. Now you have to license every student, uh, and then you receive teacher license. So it's kind of like they reversed the, the model, um, rather than, uh, like I said, just paying for teachers only. You, you have to pay for the, for all the student accounts. So that's why you'll see attached is a student account, uh, account, um, for, for the school year, um, because that's what we're going to license to.
And in its simplest forms, can you just explain, um, just very briefly, what that license is for students? So what, what is it that we're going to be paying for now?
So, um, for student accounts, it's just going to be, essentially for them will be more of the security and data size. But the real, um, I don't know what you would call it, the, the, the real price of this is the teaching tools that the teachers have already been using the past few years. Um, so that's, that's the real, uh, piece, uh, to this. It's just, again, Google changed the model and so we have to license the students. Um, but it's, it ultimately affects the students because the teachers are using those tools in the classroom.
Understood, thank you so much.
I, I know Director Martinez, it's, uh, with tech companies, it's a classic bait and switch in terms of how they, how they do, do their model. Just, uh, to be, to be honest, I'm, I'm just interested, just to ask you, um, are there any competitors? I know like Google, like, like I said, I use them all day too, has become the standard. But I'm even just interested, are there even other competitors?
You know, the, the, uh, the other one would probably be, um, Microsoft, like their Office Three-Six-five suite. Um, however, they are aimed more towards business, uh, not necessarily classroom and education. So that's where kind of, I guess, Google would have the upper hand in that part of it. Um, but popularity wise, I mean, it's preference, um, you know, for, for each company, it will be different.
Fair enough, thank you so much. Um, if there's no other questions or comments, then I'll just suggest bringing this unfortunately back onto consent. Uh, next item, receive information regarding security camera upgrades. Director Bott?
Uh, good evening, Board President Singh, Superintendent Davis and board members. In an ongoing effort to ensure sa- uh, safety of staff, students and the community, camera systems are being upgraded. The board has previously approved camera upgrades on August twenty-third of twenty-two for El Capitan Middle School and Real Vista Middle School, November eighth, twenty twenty-two for Houghton Kearney Elementary, December thirteenth, uh, twenty twenty-two for Madison Elementary, Antique Elementary, January tenth, twenty twenty-three for Steinbach Elementary, Saroyan Elementary, Roosevelt Elementary, Central Elementary and Hundred Barstow Elementary and January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three for class, Liddell Elementary and River Bluff Elementary. Uh, the district is recommending the upgrade of the camera systems at Central High School, Justin Garza High School, Central East High School, Glacier Point Middle School, McKinley Elementary, District Office and the Transportation Department. The camera systems will be purchased and installed by Magnetar using CMAS contracts. Uh, the board has previously approved the use of piggyback bids in order to obtain competitive pricing and comply with Public Contract Code two zero one one one. The total cost will be one million, three hundred thirty-three thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and ten cents to be paid by Esser Funds. Central High School will be two hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and four dollars and fifty-six cents. Justin Hu- Garza High School will be two hundred and sixty-four thousand, fifty-seven dollars and seventy-one cents. Central East High School will be two hundred and seventy-two thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and seventy-three cents. And Glacier Point Middle School will be two hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred twenty-nine dollars and forty-two cents. McKinley Elementary will be one hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred seventy dollars and seventy-two cents. District Office will be one hundred thousand, two hundred nineteen dollars and forty-seven cents. And the Transportation Office will be eighty thousand, four hundred fifty-seven dollars and forty-nine cents. Administration is recommending that this item be placed on the November fourteenth board agenda after, uh, for action after answering any questions the board may have.
Um, just a couple of questions and maybe just one. This will complete all of the upgrading, upgraded needs of these cameras, right? All of our sites will be updated, because I know it doesn't total to the twenty-one, twenty-two campuses, but I, if I remember correctly, there were some that either were new or recently updated before we started updating all of the, the lists that you've provided us in August of, beginning August of twenty twenty-two. Am I remembering that correctly?
Yeah, um, um, I can get you that information on the Friday report. We do have, I want to say it was three to five sites that were previously done in twenty twenty-two prior to starting this.
Right.
So actually, before this one, every, every school site that we can, well, I'll call it phase one, that we previously approved up to January first of, no, I'm sorry, not January first, uh, January, uh, twenty-third, I believe it was, twenty-fourth, uh, that update that we did with all those school sites brought all of our school sites up to a digital or high-def capable camera systems. So the cameras we're upgrading now already have digital or high-def cameras. We're just switching them over to our district standard, so they all are going to be on the same platform. Where these are older sites, so we're also changing out some of the older cameras and adding cameras to views that the site did not previously have.
Okay, and if I remember correctly, we are implementing processes so that we are monitoring and making sure that all of them are operational because I know that this board has expressed concerns when there's been any theft or incidents of violence. We hate hearing our cameras weren't working.
Uh, yes, so we've been working hard to try to make sure we take additional steps. The new system does allow us to get emails anytime a camera goes down or our server goes down. Also through this process, we are learning what we're going through. We also added a battery backup system. We do have small, um, power outages that don't last longer than thirty minutes, so this allows our system to stay online and doesn't crash. We've always seen with, anytime we have a, a abrupt power loss, it does unfortunately revert back to off sometimes and, uh, those cause issues and so this will actually help us out also.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your efforts and for listening to our concerns and, and making these upgrades. Thank you.
Trustees Solis?
Um, the new upgrade, are they going to be recording in a circle of so many days? Is it going to be constant, you're going to pull it back months later? What?
So we are, um, the new standard we kind of set with this process is a forty-five day recording window. Uh, previously, we were at about a thirty day, so we increased it by fifteen days. They are set to be on a motion activated, but we also have noticed in our previous installs, some school sites, we are able to turn certain cameras if they need to be, to a constant recording and we're still getting our forty-five days of recording. Um, those cameras are constantly being tripped by motion, so they're already kind of on constant. So we're just switching those over to, basically when it catches a motion, what ends up happening is there's like a little bit of a buffer second where, or time where it'll stop recording because it needs to buffer back to like a motion capture. So we've taken that out and we're just having it record constantly.
So it's on a forty-five day loop?
Forty-five days.
Loop?
Forty-five day loop.
Okay, and I'm assuming we're going to, uh, try to catch the horse after he's left the barn? So, um, where are we now putting cameras at the district office?
So with the cameras, we've added with the new buildings, we're adding cameras to catch this. We also are making sure we have coverage for our C-trains and with the addition of the solar panels, we're making sure we have one camera that you can see that's on the building behind room six. We're just trying to make sure we have enough coverage for the parking lot with the additional staff now that's also here, so catching it down to the entrance of this, uh, gate toward the, uh, toward the park.
So all our billboards are going to be covered, correct?
I'm sorry, say that one more.
All the billboards are now going to be covered?
Oh, all the billboards, uh, yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Trustee Cervantes?
Uh, um, thank you. That kind of covered my question, I just wanted to make sure, um, it's a lot of money. So I want, just want to make sure that, um, that we do some kind of study, survey, some blind spots. I know on a couple of occasions, we've asked, is there camera footage? They said, no, we don't have a camera in that area. Um, I, I'm sure we went to great depths to, I know we can't cover every square inch, but I'm sure that we did something to ensure that we're going to have maximum coverage?
Uh, yeah, so we actually did double runs, so we actually have an extra run, cat five cables or, uh, internet, uh, so we can actually add another camera to areas. So we have that ability to grow with this, with the needs of our site. And this system allows us to kind of, we can buy cameras kind of off the shelf, so I can go buy a Sony, a Samsung, Panasonic, Bosch, it's not to a, tied to a certain vendor, so we're able to add those cameras faster. Um, we have already ran into situations where school sites that came back to us after we've already done the install asking, hey, we missed this one area, we are needing it, we're able to install it for them.
So we haven't had necessarily added more, but we're putting a system in that we can add more if we need to?
Yeah.
Thank you. If no other questions to this item, I'll ask that it return as consent to our next meeting. Thank, thank you so much, Director Bott. Uh, advanced planning?
Calendar is attached and, uh, we will add in some of the requests for presentations that came up tonight to our next calendar.
And an opening for any additional information or closing comments from any of our board members. Then with that, our next meeting will be, our next regular board meeting will be held on Tuesday, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three at six PM for closed session, seven PM for public session and a reminder at Justin Garza High School's lecture hall. So we will not be here. Appreciate our team in the back accommodating us as we continue our world tour, but we head off to Justin Garza High Appreciate our team in the back accommodating us as we continue our world tour, but we head off to Justin Garza High School for our next meeting. Thank you so much. And we will adjourn back to, uh, closed session and then reconvene to close out the meeting. Thank you.